Everyone except for Jerry.
Let me know when Jerry shows up if we'll give him just another minute or so. We'd like to welcome everybody out to. I didn't even ask anybody to say the prayer, dang it.
I can do it.
Gary will do it. Like to welcome everybody out to our general session of city council meeting. It's July 7th, 2020. In attendance tonight via Zoom and and just let everybody know that this is an all electronic meeting. And we appreciate those that are attending and those that from the council and staff that are here with us today. In attendance though is Andy Dawson, Gary Peterson, Annette Judd, Kent Henderson, Jerry, is Jerry here yet? No, Jerry will be joining shortly, I'm sure. We'll go ahead and have a prayer and Gary, thank you for offering that, offering to do that.
Our Father in Heaven, we're grateful to be able to gather as council and and friends and fellow residents of West Point City. We're thankful for the many blessings that we have of protection. And that we're thankful for the public safety individuals that help protect us and ask a blessing upon them that they will be safe in in the tasks that they're asked to accomplish. We're thankful for our youth and their expertise and their leadership that they're developing and we ask that bless them to be able to continue down that road. Bless us tonight with thy spirit that will know the things that that would have us do. And continue to bless the city as a whole to be protected from the virus and to know the decisions that should be made concerning those things. And we ask for this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Gary. We'll go ahead and start with, and go, item number three, and that's communication disclosure from the city council myself, and we'll start with Annette. Do you have anything, Mike?
Sorry about that. No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Andy. You mean to.
I can't hear you, Andy. How much for pushing the space bar? We haven't, our meeting is this week, so I haven't had anything since our last meeting to discuss.
Okay. Gary, do you have anything?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Kent?
I do know, Mayor.
And then are we still missing Jerry? We're still missing Jerry?
Yes, sorry.
Okay. The only thing, Kyle, do you care if I kind of introduce the other?
No, I'm going for it.
So the only thing that I have, and I think between Kyle and Ryan and I, we can kind of tackle this. We we didn't get it on the agenda, but I and I think I talked to you, Gary, about it a couple of weeks ago at our fire district meeting, but there's been some money available to the cities and county, the CARES Act funding and it's a, it's probably, Kyle can probably do a better job of explaining it, but it's the money that's supposed to go to, you know, cities and counties to help offset some of the expenses and effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. And what it is, there's three separate tranches of money that's going to come available. And right now, the first tranche is is available. We've, West Point City has submitted for that and I think received it, correct?
Yep.
And then, and then based on, based on you know, needs and how you did on the first tranche, then the second thing can, a tranche that can be available and a third one accordingly. And so total, I think we can, West Point City, if we qualify for all three parts or groups of money, I think it would, it would, it's just under a million dollars, isn't it? Nine hundred fifty thousand?
Right.
Yeah, right around there. And so how much do we get, Ryan?
I was gonna look up the exact amount here if you give me thirty more seconds.
So.
Gary said he's trying to get on right now, so.
Oh, Jerry is, okay. So as Ryan's looking that up, you know, that's, that's a substantial amount of money for, for us to be able to, you know, put into offsetting costs of COVID-19. And so we've, we've kind of been talking with the county and the county has put together an idea that they are going to use some of the money that they received in their first tranche of money and have it go towards businesses that that can qualify and apply for this funding. And it's a grant, not a loan, to be able to offset some of their, their negative unintended consequences of COVID-19. So the county, if I, if I can, I think they're going to get a total of ten million dollars. And, and they're gonna say that they're gonna set half of it aside for this program. This program, it's available for any business that's been affected by the pandemic and the applications actually started yesterday. And they're, they're going to take them for a week and then they're going to evaluate them. And it's not, it's not a the application isn't going to be reviewed by a committee. It's basically a point system. So they, if you, you know, and it's going to be given by the businesses that have the most points and on down and on down. So there's not like a human factor of, you know, well, you know, West Point businesses get, you know, whatever. It's going to be just kind of county because we all realize that you know, even though we live in West Point, some people will work in Leighton and their job isn't like, and they're affected by that business that's in Leighton City or vice versa. There might be people that live somewhere else and work here. So we're all kind of doing it together. So the, the thing that we wanted to bring up, Kyle or Ryan, did you get that number? How much were you receiving?
Yeah, so it's three hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-two.
And that's. So we receive that much money. What, what I would like to propose and, and, and look for the council, and this is like I said, just, just to open it up for discussion or your thoughts is that in, in, under the direction of the county, that we put fifty percent of that money towards this business loan grant that they're, that they're doing countywide. And then we keep the other fifty percent to spend. You know, as we see fit, if we don't end up spending it, it goes back into the pool and it gets redistributed to other cities in that, in the state. And so I would assume that if we don't, whatever we don't spend, we'll probably, you know, put the, the rest of the balance into that fund as well. A lot of the other cities, not all of them, I would say the vast majority of their cities are doing the same type of a ratio. They're gonna keep about fifty percent right off the bat off this first tranche. And then, and then have their other fifty percent go to the county. And for those of you that, you know, would like to know the criteria or even, you know, maybe you know of a business that has been affected, whether it's in West Point or any other city, you can go to the Davis County website, go to the economic development. And there's a frequently asked questions. There's the criteria. There's all kinds of information on how you qualify for this, for this money that the county is going to make available. So with that, any thoughts or Kyle, you want to fill in the, the gaps of what I missed on DVD?
I can't think of anything that you missed. I did receive a letter today from Chief Mark Bee Craft and Tim Roper, the board chairman of the fire district. And this letter is also requesting any funding that the city would be willing to provide to them to help them offset their costs. They aren't, obviously aren't a city, so they weren't included in any funding, but they're eligible to receive them from cities. So I think they've sent this letter to Clearfield, Sunset and West Point and requesting not a specific amount. They did attach some expense sheets for what they have spent so far. And they, they are, I think eligible to use the CARES Act money on wait, on wages then for first responders. So anyway, they didn't ask for a specific amount, but there is another area in which we could.
And I think that's appropriate too. Just like I said, we're gonna have, you know, Kyle and I have talked about some of the things that we can use that money for, you know, the fifty percent that we aren't giving to the county. But I think it's appropriate that we give some of that to the fire district, how much that is, you know, we can work out with Sunset and Clearfield, maybe in the fire district and some of the other things. But just to give you just a little, I pulled up the, the thing while we're here. So it's called the Davis CARES Business Grant Program. An application period is July 6th for this first tranche of money, July 6th, 2020 to July 10th, 2020. And.
What was it called again?
It's called the Davis CARES Business Grant Program. And let me just pull, I think I was looking at this today because I, they talked about it yesterday at our, at our meeting. But it, it's, it's the money that they're gonna distribute is based on how many, okay, so if you're a sole proprietor, you can qualify for up to five thousand dollars. Businesses of one to nine employees, up to fifteen thousand dollars. Ten to forty-nine employees is up to thirty thousand dollars. So anyway, the what's that?
I didn't mean to interrupt your thought.
Go ahead.
I, I, the only thing else I was going to add is if we send half of this first tranche, that still leaves us with a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and we, I mean, there, there's a list of things that we could use it for and plan to use it for, but it doesn't, it doesn't come close to being able to spend even half of the three hundred and eighteen thousand. So even with upgrades and tech to technology or automatic flushing toilets and hand faucets and things like that. I mean, we're, we're still going to be well under under that amount.
Does emergency preparedness in general fit under this? I mean, I realize this is for the COVID-19, but we could use some emergency preparedness upgrades that in a real awful pandemic could be utilized.
The, the funding itself, we, it's pretty specific on what you can use it for. And there's been some stuff shared around between city to city on, on what they're going to use it for, but we can definitely look that up because I think that's something that would be.
So what, what, one requirement is that it can't be previously budgeted for prior to March. And if it's like, I know we have some repair issues for antennas and things that Lee Barrett has informed us about. I don't know that it'd qualify for any of those things because they were already existing and are just, just in disrepair. But there could be, there could be other elements that we could look at.
To go, to go back to this Davis CARES program that they're, that they rolled out and started yesterday. It just said eligible, eligible use of funds, grant money may be used on operating expenses, payroll, rent, mortgage, utilities, insurance, inventory, et cetera, and or COVID-19 related expenses. As you know, some of the PPP money, some of the other money that was available had some things that you, you know, maybe more restrictions on it. And so, and as I mentioned before, the, the county is very interested in getting that money back out to the businesses that have been affected by this. And as I mentioned too, that it's, if we don't spend it, it gets, it gets taken, given back to them and then redistributed to other communities. So I think it's important that we try to keep as much as a pot as of in our community as we can. And I say community, you know, I think we have to look countywide in this type of situation. So I guess without, without any, you know, formal discussion or any vote, does anybody have any concerns with with, with heading down the direction of doing fifty percent of that money going back to the county for this business grant fund? Anybody have a problem with that?
No, is that, is that kind of what the rest of the cities are gonna do?
Yeah, I think some of them are doing a little bit more. I do, the only one that I know that is not doing anything at all is Clearfield City. They've, they've decided that they're going to, you know, kind of do their own thing and I just think it's a well, well thought out process and program that is administered by the county. I don't think we have the staff manpower or anything else to roll out our own business, you know, grant funding process. For those of you that want to look into it, you know, whether you know a business or, or a business that you're involved with, it's very well thought out. And I, you know, like I said, I, I think it's good. I, I personally, my opinion is this first tranche, you know, we're gonna have a tough time spending our half as it is. I could see us putting even more money into that Davis Fund Program on the second and third tranche because it, you know, we're just not going to have a way to, to disperse that money to back out to the community. And that's really what it was for.
Talks about mortgages with that, I mean, to purchase park space or something for social distancing. I, I don't know. I mean.
Oh, well, this, this one is, oh, for.
Is that for home?
Yeah. Oh, that, that's for people and individuals and for mortgages for businesses, yeah.
What's our requirements then as a city? Does it spell that out on the site?
I don't know if it does on the site, but.
Not the one on the Davis, but the one, the CARES Act funding where, where we applied for it, it, it has to be like Kyle said, has to be COVID-related expenses. And it has to be something that you currently did not have a budget on, or in your budget before March, something of 2020. So.
So for example, one thing that we're talking with the contractor about tomorrow is further upgrades to our technology that we didn't include in the budget that we realized that our last city council meeting that we definitely need to do remote meetings. If we're, if we're gonna meet in person, but still provide a remote option, the audio was not good. Kent can attest to that. And our, our ability to hear Kent and communicate just wasn't good. So those upgrades would qualify. We're going to talk to them about how to, how to move forward with that. So that's, that's one thing. I mentioned some of those automatic doors or toilets or upgrades in the restrooms, but. And, and I guess just one last comment. The mayor asked if there are any concerns about this. At the point that we do transfer money, we probably will need to do that by a formal action or resolution. So this will come back. We just wanted to give you guys a heads up that money was available and what other cities were doing, what the county was requesting. So it'll come back.
There's no way to tie it to quality of life for our citizens.
That's a good question.
I just mentioned that because, you know, with being sequestered, the parks were getting used more and tennis courts. And I just wanted to about pickleball courts.
Yeah, I don't know. Like I said, the, there's, there's probably different interpretations. There's been a lot of stuff that's been distributed amongst the cities on what they're looking at doing. That's not one of the things that I saw pop up on anybody's list. You know, Clearfield, you know, whether, whether they're a good example or a bad example, they, they have some really unique ideas that I think maybe are on the edge of maybe not what the, the money was intended for. And so I think we need to make sure that we kind of stay in, in the middle ground so we don't get audited and, and we don't lose out on the second, third batch of money because we didn't spend the first tranche like we needed to. So.
Yeah, and Mayor, in the meeting I was in, that's kind of what the county talked about a little bit was everything's not perfectly spelled out, but we will be audited. And so you know, as, as I applied for the money, it was, you know, the, the spirit of this, you know, keep within the spirit of this, otherwise you will be audited. So that kind of, I don't know, scared us a little bit.
So I think that's, you know, we will, we will kind of head down that same thought process as I outlined. If any of you have any questions, you know, specific questions or ideas or anything like that, you know, get, get with either me or Kyle offline. You know, in between now and when we do have to transfer that money, you wrote on it. As I mentioned before, this first tranche of, of business funds will, will be allocated on July 10th. So it's gonna kind of happen quick. None of those funds that they're doing right now is part of what we committed. It's, 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 it's the kind of the first batch the county received, but as far as, just, just to give you an update, so the county will totally, total receive, Davis County will receive ten million dollars if they get all three tranches of money. One of the major expenses that they're using their money on is they, I think they've hired over forty new employees in the health department to try to do contact tracing and investigations on the COVID virus and, and all that kind of thing. And they're keeping those individuals busy. So they, obviously the county has an easy way to be able to funnel that money into the health department that, that is affected and, and will be for the foreseeable future. So if any of you have any questions or concerns about what we may or may not do with that money, let me know. I am going, I'm emailing all of you right now, the link to that Davis Fund website. So you can take a look at that and to see you know, what, what they're thinking and what they're wanting to do with this money out of district in, in the community. So anyway. With that being said, I think that's enough for me on my report. Anything from staff?
Just, I don't know if anybody's paying attention to the Davis County dashboard on COVID, but the last couple of weeks has increased countywide by about fifty new cases each week. So we've gone from two hundred to two fifty this week. It just broke three hundred in, in a week. And, and then just in Sunday and Monday's numbers, we were at a hundred. So on track to exceed the three hundred from last week. And West Point has eleven active cases currently. And, and I think I said, we have hit forty total cases, which is is interesting. From March until mid-June, our total positive cases in West Point was about fifteen. And just from in the last two weeks, we're at forty. So it's out there and, and cases are continuing to increase, but.
And, and there was one death in the county last week and that death happened to be in West Point. So that continues to be something that Kyle and I monitor every week, every Monday at four o'clock, we're on a conference call with the health department and you know, trying to get a, an idea of how it is affecting the communities and where the hotspots are and whatever. So I think it's interesting as you look at the data on that, West Point and Syracuse, you know, they do, what is it, Kyle? The, the, how many per one hundred thousand people?
The rate per hundred thousand?
Rate per, yeah, rate per hundred thousand and we're three hundred and forty-one percent. Or wait, what is it?
Yeah.
Is it three forty-one? And, and exactly the same in Syracuse. So I thought that was kind of interesting.
And it's very similar in Leighton where.
Yeah. Well, and we, we are on the higher side. We are on the higher side in the county. So that's, that's also an interesting note. Anything else, Kyle?
No, I don't think so. And we had a, actually I do have two things. Sorry, just thought of them. We canceled the movie in the park for July based on the increase, the rising case numbers. And then the other thing that we were trying to have put together that Matt Drake had suggested for our party at the point celebration was some kind of a scavenger hunt. He contacted me yesterday and said he'd still like to do that. He's been working on it. And anyway, so we'll, we'll be putting something like that together. He's donating a, a prize for it and more details will, will come on that via Facebook and and I can email the council ahead of time so that you're aware of that. But I think the Fourth of July festivities, you know, obviously they were limited. But I think that there, there was participation in, in most everything and we had the most patriotic street contest. And I think there were eight homes that had pizza delivered to their home that Friday night, the third, for their participation in the contest. So.
The Mendenhalls, the Mendenhalls on my street wanted to tell everybody thank you for the pizza. They really enjoyed it and had a good time participating.
Oh, good. That was kind of a fun idea. That's all I have.
And I, and I think some of you talked about this at the, at the very beginning of our administrative session, but I heard, and I was not around, I was out of town, but I heard that the skies of West Point were lit up quite well with fireworks and and so many comments that it was just aw, awesome and amazing to, to see. So I, I missed it, but I heard that it was, it was the sight to behold in West Point. So very kudos to the residents for putting on the show for us. Item five then is citizen comment. If any of you, any of you wish to make comment to the council, you're encouraged to email your comments prior to the meeting. And if you haven't done it, that's too late now. If you joined the electronic meeting, use the raise the hand icon on your computer, dial star nine to indicate you'd like to make a comment. When it's your turn, the meeting host will unmute you. If attending the meeting in person, which isn't possible, though, will try to halve the limit your comments to two and a half minutes. So Casey, do you want to kind of watch and see if there's anybody that would like to make comments?
Yes, and I have not received any emails.
Okay. And I, I can see a list of the attendees and I'm not seeing any raised hands yet. Are you seeing the same thing?
Yes. Maybe let's take a second.
Okay, yep. So it's the raise your hand icon or star nine if you're on the telephone, which I don't think we have anybody on telephone. We do have five attendees with us tonight. So welcome, we like to welcome you guys and hopefully you find the information that you're hearing tonight helpful. Nothing yet, Casey, right? Okay, we'll go ahead and move on then. Item six is consideration of approval of the minutes from the June 2nd, 2020 meeting. Everybody had a chance to look over those? If
I'll make a motion.
I didn't entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Second.
Second. A motion to approve the June 2nd meeting minutes. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right, same thing, only June 16th meeting minutes of 2020.
I'll make a motion to approve the June 16th, 2020 meeting minute.
Second.
Motion by Gary, second by Annette. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number eight is consideration of approval of resolutions 07, 07, 2028. Approving and adopting them, amending the number. Approving and adopting them, amending the number one to law enforcement contract services, oh amendment number one. The law enforcement services agreement providing for an effective date. Kyle, do you wanna go over this one?
Yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. We talked about it at the last meeting, um but didn't have the agreement or the amendment um to the agreement yet. Um this is uh adopting the same contract that we have had this last year. Um and changing the effective date to be June thirtieth um twenty twenty-one, or or it may say July first at midnight, twenty twenty-one. Um so no, no increase on the uh contract price. And then uh during this current year, we will uh discuss with the sheriff's office and negotiate a multi-year contract uh to adopt next July or June.
So this is kind of a bridge Band-Aid in between our contract expiring and thus getting a new contract. So any any questions or or comments on this resolution? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number zero seven, zero seven, twenty twenty A, approving and adopting amendment number one. To law enforcement services agreement, you know what I mean?
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Annette and second by Andy. Um any further discussion on this resolution? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any, okay, that so motion carries. Appreciate that. Let's see, item number nine, this is one we the I talked about just a little earlier in our admin session. This is consideration of a request to concurrently develop multiple phases of the Dahlia Estates subdivision. Boyd?
Okay, the uh the Dahlia Estates subdivision is located at approximately forty-three hundred west, three hundred north. Um the applicant is Capital Reef Management. Um they are requesting both phases. Uh phase one has twenty-four lots, phase two has twenty-three total of uh forty-seven lots. Um they will have two accesses, one at on three hundred north and one at uh forty-two fifty west. Um I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody have any questions uh in regards to this?
We can have put something in there uh about finishing that second access up at the beginning of this project.
Um when you say put something in there.
That wouldn't be necessarily for this one, right?
Tonight, you're just approving just the request to do two phases at once. Um we'll come back later for approval for each individual phase for final approval.
All right, thank you.
And I think I think too, just to, I know this is not exactly exact what the we're talking about, but uh just look forward to uh getting that new traffic study uh done and new impact fee analysis for that and we can add that road and hopefully facilitate uh that full width of that road being done um and and make that part of the the subdivision that can, you know, really be an amenity uh going in there and also get us closer to our connection point down south as that starts to move to the north. But uh any 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 uh comments or questions in regards to allowing the developer to do these two phases concurrently?
I I think, so I have a comment. I think that uh what uh we were talking about before about that second access really does apply to this because we're not just requiring phase one but allowing phase two.
Okay.
But we only want to allow phase two if they're gonna do that access quick enough that it's not a hindrance to the whole project. Um I guess what I'd like to know generally is if thirty thirty lot minimum before, or they have to have, can't go any more than thirty lots, is that what it was? Boyd, uh without having that access?
That's right.
Something like that?
That's right, yeah. And um that's already in code. We won't issue those permits until the second access is built.
And that's probably adequate to make sure that, because the total lots are fifty-seven?
Forty-seven, forty-seven.
Forty-seven. I guess it's not, that doesn't make them hurry up and do it when you're thirty is two-thirds of it. But it is some incentive.
Any any other comments on this one? If not, I'll entertain a motion, one way or another on this one. Either you're all muted or nobody wants to make a motion. Which is fine. If there's needs to be more discussion on this, or there's some, you know, whatever, uh we'll take as long as we need.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to uh approve allowing Dahlia Estates to be built in one phase rather than two. Is that saying it correctly?
Yeah. Well, that they can concurrently develop both phases.
Yes, that's my motion.
A motion by Gary. Motion by Gary and a second by Jerry. Any further discussion on the motion? Uh all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. We have reached the end of our meeting agenda. Item number ten is a motion to adjourn if nobody else has any other business to bring forth to the council.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Jerry made the motion. Who made the second? Annette?
Annette.
Okay, Annette made the second. Uh wish you all the best, uh be safe. Uh we'll we'll stay in touch and uh thank you, staff and and those that attended for being with us tonight and setting setting this all up. Um have a good rest of your evening.
Thanks.
Well done. Have a good night.